Hey, everyone. Good evening. Thank you for joining us at the City Council meeting on April 21st. We'll call roll before the pledge?
Yes.
Okay, our city clerks gonna call roll?
Councilmember Riordan?
Here.
Councilmember Cirque?
Here.
Councilmember Gunselman?
Here.
Councilmember Swift? Councilmember Feist?
Here.
If you could all stand and join me for the pledge of allegiance? I'm gonna open the public forum. At this time, the public is permitted to address the City Council on items not appearing on the agenda. Comments may not exceed five minutes. In accordance with state law, however, no action or discussion may take place on any item not appearing on the posted agenda. The City Council may respond to statements made, or questions asked, or may request staff to report back at a future meeting on the matter. Would anyone care to address the council on an item not on the agenda?
Good evening. I'm Troy Mobley. Like to comment on the park improvements, the grinding downtown on the sidewalks. I think it's a good thing. And looking forward to repaving some of the streets and cleaning things up that have been neglected over the years.
Thank you, Troy. Thanks for noticing. Thank you, Dan and your crew for getting all that done quickly. Tom, the city managers' report?
Yep. Good evening, council. I stole your lovely picture. So, some quick updates. You know, not a lot on roadway since the last meeting. We are continuing to work to clarify this funding of the Bowers Prospect Drive realignment. And been working closely with Derek. So, we're gonna have conditions of approval that we're gonna send over to ACTC for their review and response. And that's what we're working on right now. In terms of the budget, obviously, we're working on the draft budget for the upcoming fiscal year. Tonight, you have some budget amendments. You know, we're just moving money. We're not going over budget, but we're just moving money around to align with where we've seen expenses this year. We did also get a grant application in for the Henderson under drain, which is one of the other items you're gonna hear about tonight. But unfortunately, it takes quite a while before we'll know if we're gonna get that or not. And then Julie and I are gonna go to conference on Wednesday to meet with our state representatives. You know, my goal is to lobby them for the wastewater plant for money. And then on the wastewater plant itself, you know, we've been working on this, these water balances with CDCR and ION. We still have never gotten final approval of our individual water balance in the, from the Water Board itself. They had some staff turnover. They'd kind of indicated they were gonna grant an extension, but they never did. That's due on May 1st, but all three of the parties today like formally requested an extension, so we're kind of prepared. But it's gonna be very tight if we don't get that extension, so. And then we're having a separate meeting with the Water Board tomorrow, just to start to talk to them about Sutter Creek's, you know, preferred alternative and potential plans. Really to get a read on them, how would relate to our permits and and kind of what's going on with the water balance. And then in terms of economic development, we are working on a reduced scope to take advantage of that grant that we got. Basically, we're reducing it down to the very first phase. Having talked to the jobs first folks, most people got less than they asked for. And so, we're just trying to see if we can make it work to get some benefit out of it. And then the Torres of Marketing District is going in front of the Board of Supervisors tomorrow. And I think they're asking if people support that to show up at the meeting. And then I also want to say thank you to Public Works. So, we've had lots of improvements lately, a lot of effort going into the park. Also wanted to mention, I don't know if you guys saw on Facebook, we had a pretty notable arrest of a child pornography case in Sutter Creek last week. Where our PD was working with Sacramento PD and some officers did a lot of legwork on that case. In your packet towards the end in correspondence, I included a letter from HCD. They're sending these letters to a lot of cities. They passed some new ADU laws. And they're basically requiring us to update our ordinances to comply with those laws. So, we told them we're working on it. We are working on it. And just, just give you some context in case you saw that letter and to point it out to you if you didn't see it. ADUs. Eight, yeah. So, accessory dwelling units. It changed a bunch of things and, you know, our notices are close, but there's a few areas they pointed out that we need to change. And then I just wanted to just mention ACR. So, ACR currently owes the city for pool revenue from last year. You know, we're still waiting to get reimbursed for that. As we kind of go into this poll season, you know, the Board of Supervisors is also I think mentioned in meetings, you know, whether ACR is going to be around or not. So, it's just something to keep an eye on. You know, right now, we're counting on them to help manage the pool this summer. And then we-
Do we have a backup plan?
We currently don't. I mean, we would-
Might be a good idea.
Yeah.
I can add on to that a little bit during my report from-
If you have a quick comment, sure.
We actually weren't able to meet this week because we didn't have a quorum, but that was on. But I can just say there are a number of financial concerns. And at this point, I would look into, I would start investigating a Plan B.
Okay. Obviously, we didn't, we didn't budget or plan to hire lifeguards. We're gonna have to figure, figure that out. And then the last thing, we've started streaming these meetings live on YouTube. So, people can, can watch you guys on YouTube without logging into Zoom. And that also is gonna save the city money. We're not gonna pay Dropbox to store our files anymore. It's free storage on YouTube, so. Good. Thanks to our new city clerk.
Great. Thanks, Aaron.
Thank you. Are those meetings available? You said live. Are they available afterward?
Yeah, and then, just like they have been, they'll be linked to the website to the meetings.
Does that mean that we don't have public participation on Zoom, but sometimes we have consultants and things remotely? We could still do that and it'll be on YouTube?
Yes. Yeah, so Zoom integrates with YouTube, so we're still using Zoom. But it's sending the video to YouTube as well. And lots of events coming up. Small little water foul race coming up on Saturday. This was a test run, which again, I'm stealing photos left and right. And, you know, we're just kind of in the heart of event season, so we've got a busy April and busy May coming up. And then in terms of your agendas, so again, our next meeting is gonna be May 19th. We're on track to have the audit completed by then. We'll have a draft budget for your review. Tonight, we gave you an information report about delinquent sewer bills. Usually, I don't think we typically did that, but usually that list shrinks as we get closer, so you guys should expect it to shrink. May 19th will actually be the public hearing where you guys will review the final list and approve it for collection. And we're still working on a wastewater treatment plan RFQ. We also will be awarding some sewer collection repair projects. We are opening bids on that tomorrow as well. And then there's a, there's a new state law about staffing where the city is required to talk about open positions. And we also give our unions a chance to address the council. So, we're gonna be doing that on the May 19th meeting as well. Our unions, so SEIU and POI, if they want to. Yep.
Hey, Tom, quick, quick question on the audit approval on the May 19th meeting. So, who's gonna present the audit information? Is the auditor gonna be here to answer questions and that kind of-
Typically, we've asked them to be here. Yeah. I think last year, they did it over Zoom. That saves us money if you guys are okay with them, you know, presenting.
That's fine. Yeah. Thank you.
Yep. And then we have our first meeting of this Budget Ad Hoc Committee on, on May 22nd, that same week. And that's it.
Tom, have we made any progress in determining the if the plant is in the FEMA floodplain or?
Yes and no. I mean, it, it is in their current maps, and then we're trying to figure out the best course of either trying to change those maps or construct a flood wall. Gonna see which is the best course.
And then also, just a reminder to everybody if they hear it, the Board of Supervisors is hearing the lodging proposal. But also, if anybody sees on the agenda the ACR money for Bryson Park-
I was gonna mention that.
Okay, cool.
Yeah, I think that's-
We have people who want to show up. Anybody else have a question for Tom on the council? Public? Okay, we'll move on to the approval of minutes from April 7th.
I'll make you a motion to approve the minutes from April 7th, was it?
A second.
There's a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, moving on to the consent agenda. We could go ahead and approve those in one motion unless anybody needs to pull something?
I'd like to pull the first one, the capital improvement plan.
Okay, we're gonna pull A. Any others?
I, I just had a quick question on C and a quick question on D. I mean, really quick. So, I don't know if we need to pull it, or you want to answer a couple of questions?
Go, go ahead.
So, on C, the lot approval. So, I was just interested why it was back now. Is this just a procedural situation?
Yes, so you guys approve in detail tentative maps-
Yes.
With conditions of approval.
Yes.
They've now met those. This is the final map.
Very good.
And so, that's why it's on consent.
Okay, great. And the second one on D had to do with those sewer delinquencies. And I was just struck by the number and the amount of money and wondering historically, does this look about right? Or is this in any way reflective of the new sewer rates?
Looks like all of Mason's being-
Thank you.
Getting tired of talking.
I thought the same thing. I wanted to check because we had a, I'm, everyone's aware, we had a significant rate increase back in July. So, I was curious to see kind of how the figures stacked up. It is higher this year. We do have more people on the list, but really, the, I compared it against the final list that went to the county in August of last year, which shrank significantly from the original list. So, I would say right now, the figures are higher, but there's also just more people on the count. So, hard to say right now what the final count really looks like. I think we'll take a review closer when we get into June, May, June, when we get a final list. But the, the figures do look higher right now than they did last year. I think naturally, just because of the higher rates too.
Fair enough. Thank you.
So.
And you've told me in the past that some people just seem to wait and then they pay it right, right before.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, some people will pay it all at once. It just depends on how they, how they do their finances. But yes, I do expect the list to shrink as we get closer to August.
Okay. But, but you haven't gotten like a lot of like protest letters or things like that saying, "I'm not paying this" or anything like that?
No.
Very good. Thank you.
Thanks, Mason. I'd hear a motion then to approve B, C, D, and E on the-
Did Julia have a question?
Yeah, I, I wanted to pull A.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, so we could approve B, C, D, and E if that works for everyone?
So moved.
Okay.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay, let's go to A. Julia?
So, Tom, I, I had some questions regarding the, I think it's the capital improvement plan for 2025, the community center solar project-
Yep.
To come out of instead of the city impact fees, the park impact fees?
Correct.
So, I just have some concern of pulling $172,000 from the park.
If I could explain, uh-
Sure.
So, we're working with a consultant on this Nexus study. Who's looking at all of our impact fees. Our parking, park fees are higher than our facility fees and community centers are considered part of Parks and Rec. So, it's her suggestion that we do that. And again, she's looking at our forecasted projects and our capital needs and aligning those with sources of funding. So, this is a, it's kind of a technical change. If we left it on facilities, you know, we may need to return park fees and we won't have enough facility fees to do the projects.
Is our park impact fee fund that wealthy and healthy?
Not right now, but again, the, all of the stuff is predicated on if we had development, these are the fees we would collect.
Okay. So, my, my concern is in, for, for me, in terms of priorities for spending park impact fees, that the, for me, the solar for the auditorium wouldn't rise above improvements in the park or potential pathways. For, I think, for the grammar school, you know, for $165,000, we can upgrade the total HVAC system, which to me is, is a bigger priority for $162,000 to use the park impact fees for that rather than the solar for the auditorium.
Yep. So, respect your opinion, but you know, we went through the exercise of prioritizing the projects. We, we didn't change the priorities. We just changed the source of funding to basically align with what potential fees would be. And again, if, if we don't do that, the, the outcome would be less park fees and and still not being able to afford the facility because we couldn't justify the park fees if we don't have priority projects.
So, the grammar school HVAC is not a priority project?
I don't think it made your top list when we looked at the five-year plan, or we were said, I don't remember actually. But again, right now, the grammar school, this, the, the one that we changed was not the auditorium. It was the desk building, the community center.
Yeah, I missed.
Which gets used a lot more as a community center than the grammar school, so. Again, I think once we actually, if we had development, we actually had impact fees, we would bring individual projects back to you guys at that time. So, this is really to get the planning documents ready to be able to move forward on the Nexus study.
I would like to have time then to go back and review our priorities to see where the solar or the community center falls in line with the prior, the other priorities that are lighting.
I mean, you can make that motion and see.
I move that we pull the capital improvement plan as presented with the source of funds correction for the solar project instead of city funds coming out of the park impact fees until the priorities can be further reviewed to see where it falls in line.
There's a motion. Is there a second before I open it for discussion? There's no second. I don't hear a second, so let's have some discussion. Part of the plan, when we review the Nexus study, or when we do the Nexus study and review the fees, if I remember correctly, was to shrink the number of different accounts we have. And we were gonna put our buildings and facilities together, right? Because the, the old accounts, we have a, a new city hall fee and we have a new police, you know, they're, they're kind of bogus and not gonna happen. I also recall, speaking of ACR a minute ago, when ACR did their 10,000-page report, remember, Julia? Like four, five years ago? The auditorium and the city hall and the grammar school were all in there as our parks or as part of our parks. So, it jives with it in that sense.
So, when we did the CIP, we, we just kind of looked at where we thought fees would come in. You, if you guys remember, we made assumptions and then we assigned funding. And when we assigned the funding, we, instead of assigning the park fee, we assigned a community facility fee. And some ways we could look at it, it was a mistake or, you know, again, the consultant is suggesting that we switch it to the parks fee. And again, we will review the CIP annually, so, you know, we'll bring it back next year. So, you know, again, I'm not trying to, it's up to you guys what you want to do, but-
Well, the reason that, like, like Julia, that I'm comfortable letting it go at this point is just, is just that the priorities aren't changing. This money, we're not gonna have it next year. That's for certain. And every time we talk about this on an annual basis, we'll have the opportunity to go back and see if there's anything we want to clean up. At this point, I just feel more comfortable getting that job done so that the Nexus study can be completed. But I don't think it's locking us into anything, so I'm not uncomfortable with accepting the way it is at this point.
My, my other concern in this will come out with my ACR report is specifically addressing what you brought up, Dan, about a Plan B. And from, for the pool. And I can explain why, like, ACR isn't sure that there will be funding for it.
Right.
I just leave it at that.
Surmised.
So, my concern is to be conservative spending in areas that are not necessarily higher on a priority list rather than serving the public through our parks and our pool. And having that money available maybe later on down the line.
Right. So, let me ask a clarifying question, Tom. To that very specific issue, is if we approve this thing, is there any way, shape, or form that that can have a negative impact on our ability to be able to try pull something together this year? It, it, does it change that the baseline calculus for that decision?
No, because this is only, this money can only be used for capital. And like I said, we don't actually have this money.
Right.
We won't have it-
Right.
For at least a year. So, you know, in terms of like getting lifeguards and things, that has to come from general, general fund money.
So, with the, with the solar project though, for this community center, and I'm not opposed to that. It's just in the, what I'm remembering from our priorities. And again, it behooves maybe all of us to go back and see where this falls, is to make sure that we can take care of other projects that we have, you know, in, in that prior, in the prioritization.
Yeah, so I think council member reared instead of the the right way. It's like, nothing's really gonna happen for a year. This will come back to you guys. You can, we can re-talk about priorities then. Right now, what we're just trying to do is get all our ducks in a row to be able to complete the Nexus study. And then once, once we have this framework, you know, we'll bring the CIP back annually. We got way more projects than money and that's probably gonna be true for a long time, but so it, we're gonna have to make some trade-offs, but I wouldn't worry about this priority right now. It's really not gonna have any impact.
You say it's not. So, the purpose of having the park impact fees paid to cover expense is to clarify the Nexus study?
Correct.
Because the city impact fees can't, the, the funding can't come out of the city impact fees. Is that correct?
Yeah, the facility fee is very, very small. And again, what we need to show over the long term, and this is our five-year forecast, if we had 150 home development where we would spend that money. But that clock doesn't start ticking until you get those impact fees anyways, right? So. And you know, the other buildings you're talking about are similar. It would be the same thing. We would use Parks and Rec money for the grammar school potentially. Right? It's the same class as this building, basically. Right? They're both community centers.
So, are you just clarifying the semantics of where the money is coming from?
Yes, exactly.
That, that makes more sense to me.
Okay.
All right. Thank you.
Any other questions from the council? Public? If not, I'd hear a mo-
I make a motion that we approve Item 7A on the consent agenda.
A second.
There's a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, that takes us to the administrative budget. We have budget amendments. Tom or Mason?
Yeah, Mason, do you want to present this one? I have, I can put them up on the screen for you.
Yeah, that'd be great. Well, let me start by saying I apologize for not being able to be here last time. I was really not in the best of shape. But a lot of these items listed on these budget amendment, on this budget amendment item, were discussion items that were brought up during the budget review from last meeting. So, we're reallocating some funds from expense items that might not have performed as we expected when we developed the original approved budget. And we're moving them to line items that had a little more activity than originally anticipated. Happens throughout the course of the year. Things go on that we might not have originally been expecting that accrue a lot of expenses rather than other items. So, we're just shifting money around. And do believe there is an item on there to shift some fund balance money from an operational account to a reserve account, wastewater enterprise fund. As, you know, part of the intent for the rate increase was to start to increase our reserves for capital over the next few years in anticipation for a new plant. This is just we're, we're seeing that money start to accrue in that account, so it's appropriate to just start moving it over as we see it start to build up in the operations account. So, we're just, and I, we do have some, as you're aware, we have some collections projects going out to bid. So, we're expecting some expenses out of the operations account. So, we're not moving a whole lot over. We're just, we know we can move over some right now.
So, to, to that note, Mason, the, the M and O is likely INI stuff we budgeted for that we didn't do in this year. So, we're gonna put the money in our reserves. Is that right?
We're moving some treatment plant capital improvement money over to collections, INI stuff, because we didn't do as much treatment plant work this year than we had budgeted for. But we are planning to do a lot more INI stuff. So, we're just shifting some of that treatment plant money over to collections to do those projects for this year. On top of that, we're just shifting some money out of the Fund 10 fund balance over to Fund 14 just to put into reserves, which was one of the major points why we increased the rates like we did. So, it's kind of a two-fold thing. One is, one is actual cash, I should say, and one is activity. One is expense and revenue activity.
Just one question. Budget amendment four, the first line for wastewater treatment plant improvements was changed from 225,000 to 180, 185,000. And then in budget amendment six, line four, wastewater treatment plant improvements, the 185 is reduced to 10,000. So- Why, why is it, was it done twice?
Part of, part of that line, we moved to cover for Amendment four. So, it went from 200 and, I can't, it's small, but 200 and something thousand. I can't read it from here. So it went from 200 and, it's small, but 200 and something thousand, I can't read it from here.
225 to 185.
To 185, right? So we moved some of that money to engineering costs to account for, we employed hydro science recently to work on the wastewater treatment plant work. So this is to help pay for that. And then with the remaining balance of the budgeted expenditures, we moved some of that money down to work for budget amendment six, which was for the collections improvements. So really, it's, in net, it's going from 225 down to 10, because we're just not planning on doing much treatment plant work this year. So. And Dan, I don't know if that's, that's accurate, right? It's kind of what we talked about.
Yeah, that's accurate. Yeah, what we're trying to do is kind of, the things that we think are not gonna break or hopefully not gonna break quickly, we're gonna hold off on those, because the scope is just so big that we figure we could use that money to more accurately help with the new plant versus trying to limp along things that we think might make it, you know, so at this point.
Any risk in a move like this?
Always. I mean, like Dan said, if something catastrophic happens at the plant that might be tomorrow.
In which case, what do we do?
We can do another budget amendment and move some money back.
Just wanted to hear you say that.
We could do that. We could do that. We just don't anticipate it.
Exactly. Thank you.
I have a note here, and I don't remember if it was from this meeting's agenda or the last meeting's, but the sewer hookup fees were under what we anticipated.
For revenue?
Yeah. Can you remind me, we're only allowed to do some things with those?
Capital, similar to impact fees. Yep, they're basically impact fees.
So does the fact that that's under budget, i- is that leading to these amendments here?
No, those impact fees go to a specific impact fee account that we don't really tap into unless it's approved by you guys, because that has to be capital related. So this is really just operations account strictly, moving to other reserve accounts to not be touched unless you guys say so, or just shifting around within that operational account, just to different expenditure lines. Hard to, it's hard to anticipate for those impact fee ones, the connection fees. I mean, we just don't know what development's gonna look like for the year. We just take a, we take an optimistic or not so optimistic guess about what we think based on activity from the prior year or two.
Any other questions from the council?
Oh, one more thing. I did mention in my report at the end that there is a new house being built. So we did, we are getting some sewer connection fee money from them. It's a house being built on California Drive.
Thank you, Mason.
Nothing else? I hear a motion to approve the budget amendments.
I still move.
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
That takes us to the sewer rate increase notice, which is, I think, just informational. Tom or Mason or Dan?
Yeah, I'll just jump in in a second. Again, you guys approved this schedule that's up on the screen. We're gonna send out notice the beginning of the month. Some people love plenty of notice, and we just wanted to bring it to you guys and let you know that that was happening.
I think it should be mentioned, we'll be sending something in the newsletter as well. And our, on the backside with this information, just another way to notify people ahead of time. This is a kind of a double fold, twofold thing.
And that one's info only, huh? No action, no action on that one?
No. So just wanted to make sure you guys were aware if you had any questions.
Good.
Okay, see, the short-term loan? And this already came before ARSA with Gemini on it, if you want to explain that, Tom?
Sure. Yeah, so we had an ARSA meeting last Thursday. And so again, for for those of you who aren't on ARSA, just a reminder, this, this is a, the outflow pipe of the Henderson reservoir dam is is half gone, it's disintegrated. Spent an issue for a number of years. We we reserved about half the funds in the ARSA capital budget this year, and we were gonna reserve the second half next year. But we're in a situation where we've gotten the water down very low, which has been an issue that stopped us in the past. And we put it out to bid, and one of the bids from, the one from Campbell Construction came in, you know, quite attractive rate. So we are looking to move forward with the repair. The ARSA board went ahead and approved it, subject to you guys also approving it. And the challenge here is that with the contingency fees and engineering management fees, we're gonna be, I forget, it's like 270,000 short. So we're requesting 281,000 short. And we could, ARSA could potentially go out and get a loan at market rates and pay interest. Or ARSA could just wait a year. But then, again, we're subject to rainfall and and increasing construction costs. Or what we could do, what we're suggesting, which is that the city of Sutter Creek loan ARSA up to $300,000. And when you think that 85% of ARSA is Sutter Creek, we're essentially loaning ourselves the funds to be able to do the project. In the ARSA budget, which starts in July, Sutter Creek, Martel and Amador City will continue to pay for that new budget. So there will be a capital reserve fee as part of that budget. So it will be paid down monthly from ARSA to the city of Sutter Creek. So I'm pretty, very confident telling you guys, it's very low risk. I think it saves us money overall, and that's why I'm suggesting it. We also, second thing, we got a protest to the bid from Sirocco. And you have a letter at Places that went out last week, which is the city's response to that protest. They were concerned about some of the qualifications. And, you know, our engineering firm checked the references. They verified that Campbell's qualified to do this work. And so we denied the protest. So I just wanted you to be aware of that. And, you know, Campbell's done a fair amount of work on the ARSA pipeline over the years. He was probably the most familiar with it. And talking to him, I think that's, that's why the bid came in the way it came in. So he knows, this equipment is here, he knows how to get it in there. So he, he was confident in his bid. So happy to take questions.
This, my first one is just a point of clarification. It's just, there were two numbers that were mentioned in the very bottom paragraph. One is referring to 19,321. The other one is 19,312. And that reflects in the, if you, if you look under the discussion, Campbell Construction, the total comes to 510,321. But not that it makes, you know, a significant difference. Is it just a typo? Or is it 52312, the two and the one?
So the, this is the construction, the 500,000, 520,312. But then the total project cost is 681. Is that, are those the numbers you're referring to?
No, I was referring to the Campbell Construction, by adding the base bid amount,
Oh.
additive comes to 510,321, but the number 52312.
Sure.
So I think it's just a typo. That's not a major, that's the least of my concerns, but.
Got it, the one and the two.
Yeah, yeah.
Got it. Okay.
My, my other concern is if we are technically loaning the money to ourselves, is that coming out of our ARSA?
Well, legally, the the city, which is billed by ARSA and pays ARSA.
Correct.
The, the legal entity, the city, is loaning the money to ARSA. And, but ARSA, 85% of ARSA is the city of Sutter Creek. That was the only point I'm trying to make.
So would that come out of the ARSA, the repair and maintenance fund? Where would that $300,000 come out of?
Yeah, it would probably come from capital reserves of the city.
Because if you, if you look on page 335 and jumping ahead a little bit to the budget report, ARSA has a deficit of $320,000. But then down, it has still a remaining budget for repairs and maintenance of 425. So the balance looks like for ARSA is 493,309. Is that where this $300,000 will come out of?
I'm not following your numbers. I don't know, Mason, are you following?
So I think I see what you're saying. So you're wondering if we're gonna pay this out of the ARSA fund?
Correct.
To pay to ARSA. So the ARSA fund, Fund 80, I think, is the one you're mentioning.
Correct.
Each year, that fund, the beginning of each year, we bring it to zero, and it's paid out of the wastewater enterprise fund, because we treat it like that's the city's cost for the tertiary, the tertiary treatment. So we, that fund has a zero to start, and then it accrues a negative balance throughout the year, and we zero it out each year out of Fund 10, basically. So the money, Fund 10's the operations wastewater enterprise, yeah. That's what we were talking about earlier with the budget amendments, that same one. And that's the practice, that's the practice that's happened for a long time. But since this is capital, and Tom, Tom's saying that we have wastewater capital funds that we would probably tap into just to loan out.
I probably, probably misspoke. I guess, whatever makes sense, maybe capital would make the loan, but then operations would pay it back, I guess.
Mm-hmm. Yeah. So, yeah, we would, when we get the money back, it would go into operations, and then we would channel it back into the reserve account to refund it, basically, to pay it back. That's how I see it happening. It wouldn't come from 80, it would probably come from, I don't have the fund list in front of me, but 12 or 12 or 14 or one of those ones.
Okay.
Yeah.
Go ahead.
No, that was, that was my concern, is where the funding would come from. And it says ARSA's reserved 400,000 capital this year. So is that?
So, to recap my understanding of it, ARSA, and and I don't think Tom hit on this point, we're doing this to the reservoir that we're planning to hopefully in eight or 10 years walk away from, because it was part of our settlement. We have to. There's, there's no choice in the matter. So ARSA reserved, budgeted to pay for this 50% at a time. It's gonna take them two years to save the money to pay for it. But the bid came in so low that it's only $200,000 over the the half of the money that ARSA's already saved. And the reservoir is empty or nearly empty, which is, who knows if it'll happen again next year, you know, that, that's a gamble. So it's, the the loan is in order to do it this year rather than next year, but in either case, it's gonna be done. And by next year, ARSA's money will likely be folded into the city's money anyways, and it'll all be one budget.
So is it, is it too simplistic to ask giving ARSA the $300,000 how it's going to be recouped? Is there?
Through sewer collections.
Yes.
We would budget in ARSA, when we bill the city of Sutter Creek, Amador City, and Amador Water Agency, we would budget in there that they would need to pay back, like, through the ARSA revenue, right? That we would pay back this loan for the work done.
They get a bill and they pay it, and it, it would be the same bill. We wouldn't explicitly, we're not adding an extra charge. They're already paying into capital. It would just continue for the second year, so.
And.
Again, what we kind of have here is a cash flow problem, the money.
Right.
Be collected.
Exactly.
In two years. But we're, we're accelerating it, basically.
Wasn't, wasn't the plan all along to do that underdrain repair this year?
We, we kind of crossed wires, I guess, internally in that we were budgeting half in this fiscal year and the second half of next fiscal year. But that means we don't really have the money till the end of the fiscal year, not the beginning.
I'm all in favor of getting this done as soon as possible, and if this is what it takes, it's just, if, if the dissolution of ARSA had hadn't kind of run into some headwinds because of of the contracts and that have to be cleared up, ARSA wouldn't even exist today. It would be Sutter Creek. It'd be the Sutter Creek would absorb ARSA. So we wouldn't even really be having this discussion. We might be talking about budget amendments, but we really wouldn't talk about the city loaning ARSA money. And like Tom said, 85% of ARSA is Sutter Creek. So if we can, if this is what it takes, get this done with a very attractive bid, as you mentioned, let's do it.
The original, I mean, another way to think about it, too, is if we were doing 50% now and 50% next year, if we, instead of thinking, we just get it done now, we still budget for the other 50% roughly next year, and instead of it just saving up in the coffers to pay for it next year, we're just paying back what the city loaned. So really, it's just a different way of.
Thank you for explaining.
And less than 50%, because it's gonna cost us less.
Costs us less.
Yeah. And, and just to touch on what Jim said, the the headwinds with the ARSA dissolution, isn't anything that's taking it completely off the tracks? It's just taking a long time to get through the new agreements that the city will have with AWA and Amador City, and we have had a lot of other things going on, so, you know, they just fell a little behind.
You, you answered, thank you for clarifying that.
From my perspective, it looked like a good solution. The only thought and question I had was, at a time when we're trying to look as good as we can look financially for the wastewater treatment plant, will this action have any negative impact on that? Not that we could do anything else anyway, I'm just curious. It's not enough money, is it?
I would say the short-term nature of it probably wouldn't concern them too much.
More cash is always better. But in this.
But then again, you'd have that liability.
Totally, yeah.
With DSO D hanging over your head.
Exactly.
This thing done. I think that'd have a more negative impact than.
Yeah, it's a great point, Jim. Thank you. No, it sounds good.
And the revenue generation from ARSA from the participating members has never really been an issue. So I'm not concerned about recouping the money.
Right.
We always do really well on the ARSA side, so. The members are, they work, we work well together.
The cost to do this, if it goes, has to go out to bid a year from now, it might be another 200, $300,000. We gotta move.
Yep.
Well, and, and just so it's in the record, too, that we're liable for 85% of it and it's 0%, that's a huge boon to Sutter Creek. There is a resolution.
I'd be happy to move to approve the resolution, funding the ARSA shortfall to get the Henderson Dam work done.
I'll second.
There is a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Hey, we're gonna move on to mayor and council reports. Dan?
As I mentioned last month, I'm gonna be gone for next month's ACTC meeting. I'm leaving Wednesday. I'll be gone for 10 days. And I don't have anything else.
Julia? We were supposed to have an ACR meeting this past week, because we did not have a quorum. We couldn't address some really pending serious issues. One is the financial status in general of ACR. So I can't release any specifics, other than there's enough concern about the, I think, the stabilization of the association and being able to sit down and make some sense out of our numbers and so I don't, I don't have a lot of positive news, but I could only say, based on information that was informally shared, since we didn't have a formal meeting, there were no minutes, no formal discussion. But there's, there's a current of concern.
Can we take Julia's report as direction to start to think about a Plan B for the pool? Or is this an appropriate time to, to give that direction?
I, I would like to have, to make that, as well, support that.
Well, we could work on a plan, doesn't mean we have to adopt it, but.
No, 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 but I think it's good to, as I said before, start thinking of a Plan B. It, it wouldn't hurt at this point. And tomorrow at the. And tomorrow at the Board of Supervisors meeting, um, I know that they will be, um, approving the impact projects, um, through ACRA, our Bryson Park, uh, is in that, so, and I believe there's a memo of understanding that has to come from the city, um, to make sure those funds are transferred in the right way.
So that's tomorrow's meeting?
Yes, at nine o'clock.
Um, I know I had, uh, said a resident who was willing to attend, I don't know if any of the rest of you do.
I was planning on attending.
Has ACRA hired lifeguards and some teachers, do you know?
Hmm, not yet, but this is still early. Typically, that happens around in May. So we're hoping for, um, a quorum and to be able to settle some business, and could be a big meeting in May. I don't want to be doom and gloom, but I, I just think it's a good idea to have a Plan B.
So it'd be a really quick turnaround from your meeting to what happens with the pool?
Well, um, I think that would be the discussion, um, the approval of the contract that we, we approved our contract, uh, but ACRA still has yet to formally approve that. We were, it was on the agenda, but we couldn't vote on. So there isn't anything established or settled yet.
Thank you, Julia, for the information you can give us.
Is that enough mud to see through?
What's exciting about the Bryson Park, that's exciting.
Yes, so.
We have a resident that's been coming in and, um, I told her that there's a potential for that, and she's very excited. She's glad people can use the bathroom up there.
Can you contact her to see if she wants to go to the meeting?
I can try.
The, the person I have is not a her, so it sounds like it's two different people.
Mm-hmm, she lives right across the street from the park, so she's, she sees people over there and she, it's hard, she says it's just sad to watch them, they get there, they get all set up, and then they don't have a bathroom.
There's many, many years of people who have contacted us, I don't know a good way to reach them all for support on this, but it would be nice if a few showed up at the Board of Supervisors.
I can try and get ahold of her, yeah. She'd be more than happy to.
Susan? I'm jumping, and then I'll go to the middle.
No, but just on the Bryson Park thing, is it on our Facebook? That would be a good way to get ahold of people.
Yeah, we can, we can try to do a blast in the morning. Just say with the Board of Supervisors, they're also doing the public hearing for the Tourism Marketing District, and I imagine there's going to be a lot of people there for that, based on past meetings.
I, this isn't like a, um, super time-sensitive thing, but I heard someone talking about, um, I think Sonoma County, about the, um, short-term rental ordinances that we had spoken of one time, and they had an interesting delineation that they limit, or they actually don't allow, I don't think it was Sonoma, but was a nearby county, that they don't let corporations hold homes and have short-term rentals, so it might be a interesting thing to look at at one point, to let people that own homes make money off of them, but not encourage people to come in that are more doing it as a business to, um, hang up the rental market.
If you know what city that is, I'd be.
Yeah, I'll try and remember.
Yeah.
Jim?
Uh, just a couple of things, uh, Thursday was the Knight Foundry Alliance, uh, monthly meeting. Uh, doesn't have a big effect on us, but the, uh, current president, Wade Worsham, uh, had to step down due to health issues, and so Robin Peters, who was, has held that position previously for six or seven years, has stepped back and has taken that position. And so, uh, we wish Wade all the best of wishes for his, uh, recovery in this time. And, um, in the, also, just a quick observation, and then we talk about saving money. This is like of the LA phone book, and I'm wondering, there's a hundred pages of it, is the, the bid for the Henderson Underdam. Is it possible that we have the, I mean, I, I've got it on my, on my tablet, I can look at it there. And then it just seems like we wasted five hundred or
We'll try to be more careful.
Pages, and just give us the option, say, hey, if you really need a printed copy of this, you know, you, we'll make it available. Or, you know, it's, it's on the, the website.
We could provide a link to the technical specs if you really wanted to see them.
Right.
Yeah, I, um, did I print it double-sided? Did I print it double-sided this time?
Yeah, it's double-sided, but it's a hundred pages.
Still a lot, yeah.
Two hundred, two hundred pages double-sided, that's a hundred pieces of paper.
I didn't even real, I, I didn't realize it was that long.
Yeah, I, it just goes on and on and on, but, uh, I don't think we need to, to print the whole thing.
I agree.
Um, okay, my turn. There's a duck race on Saturday.
Really?
You know about that? Uh, it's going well. I, I think we're going to sell all five thousand ducks. I really do, um, but I really don't want to sell a lot of them on Saturday, for a lot of different reasons, most of which are selfish, but it's just really, it's hard, because you have to get the right ducks in the creek, and anyways, not to bore you. Um, yeah, uh, any, any help we could do, uh, we could use, um, to spread the word for people to buy them now. There's no difference, no, you could buy them online, there's no surcharge, change it on the bottom, just get it done. Um, but it's going really well and it's mind-blowing how many different groups of people are involved, and it's everything we hoped for. Um, and then also, uh, the Sutter Creek Community Benefit Foundation, I'm on the board, um, its president, who is my dad. Uh, he's been president for many years, and he's one of the founding members of the foundation. He stepped down as president. Uh, he's still on the board, and John Swift will be president. Um, Amy Klingon is vice president, Nancy Champlin is secretary, and I'm treasurer. I think that's all I got.
Great work on that duck business, mayor. Fabulous. I know it's not all you, but a lot of it is you, so hats off.
Thank you, Dan. Um, city attorney's report.
I have nothing.
Information and correspondence. I had a couple little things, anybody else? Okay, then I'll go with my couple little things. Um, Erin's not here, but on her report, page three thirty-nine, three forty, the last bullet, staff has fielded numerous information requests regarding the development of vacant lands. I was wondering what that means. Uh, information requests from the people that own those lands, or, or what?
Uh, hang on a second. Vacant lands. Uh, I'm not sure, I mean, we get a lot of calls, so might be people looking to buy lots.
We do get a lot of calls about people asking what can be done with empty lots around town. Um, and we point them in the direction of Erin, because zoning plays a big part of that, and I'm not an expert on zoning, so.
Oh, so people looking at the empty lots and wondering what could be put on them, and then going to, so potential buyers, maybe?
Correct.
I, I just thought that was interesting and wondered what it meant. Um.
We do get, we do get quite a few of those.
Thank you, Dan, for all the park work. It's really awesome. I don't know if you guys have walked on the, the.
DNG, stabilized DNG.
Yes, it's incre- and I walked halfway up the creek the other day doing our duck race trial, and it's so nice and weed-eated.
Beautiful.
Um, are the, uh, letters we got, one of the letters from Ian and Brenda Watts reminded me that we did a parking survey, you guys, staff did a parking survey of residents to see what they thought. And I don't remember us getting the results of that survey.
Yeah, we got a handful of responses, um. Most people felt we should enforce parking, and it was kind of split over having a couple hours free or not. I mean, it was, it wasn't enough results to be worthwhile, which is why you didn't hear anything about it.
Gotcha.
But it was interesting that, um, you know, the idea of paid parking versus enforcement, people seem to want enforcement, but not paid parking. Um, but my experience with the retail district is you think you'd want a couple hours free, and then you have to pay after that, or.
Well, and as far as the correspondence, we've, I think we've gotten a couple, um, touches from Greenstone Terrace, but last meeting, some of that was delivered straight to the chief, so I figure the ball's in his court. That's all I got. Anybody else? Future agenda, agenda items?
Um, I'd like to place, um, ACRA activity, um, kind of as a whole regarding the pool, after-school programs, um, just enough that I hope to have an, um, so our next meeting will be May, the end of May, we should have an ACRA meeting between now and then.
You work with Tom and see exactly what you want with agenda, agendas on that?
Yep.
Julia, is there a concern that the whole ACRA summer program would fall apart as well?
Um, things, things just aren't, aren't sure yet. I can only say that much, because it wasn't a formal meeting, so there wasn't public information that really would be shared, so I can just say there's some warranted concern.
But again, there's been public discussion at the Board of Supervisors about shutting down ACRA, so. So that means, I guess, if the county run these programs or not, I, I have no idea, but I don't think it looks good.
So I think Lottie Tone had mentioned at some point Sutter Creek used to have some sort of summer offerings for kids, is that, I mean, that would be like, wow, a lot, sort of term, but.
Yeah, I don't want you guys to get too excited, we're
Yeah.
It, you know, it'd take a while to get ready for this stuff, here we are.
Yeah.
In April.
Yeah. So fu- future agenda-wise, are we still on that?
Yes, sir.
Um, Tom, I think you mentioned that the conditions for the potential development up here would be sent to ACTC. What conditions? What, what, what are we talking about? I'm a little.
So sorry, it's a little vague, but
Yeah.
You know, when we, when we get a project, we send it to corresponding agencies to provide feedback on the things that they're responsible for.
Yeah.
So the condition of approval around streets, uh, would go to ACTC. We will tell them what the city would plan to do as a condition of approval, and they can provide comments on it, so that's what I'm talking about.
Okay. Now, those conditions, will we be made aware of what they are? And at what point will we be made aware of what they are?
Typically, this all happens, you guys aren't aware, it goes out to AWA, it goes out to the fire district. All that input's gathered, and then it goes as a package to the planning commission, so that would be the first stop.
Okay.
But before we even do that, we're going to send the ACTC condition to them.
Uh-huh.
Um, because that has the potential to be a showstopper by itself.
Mm-hmm.
And this is not until the application's deemed complete?
Yes, we're getting kind of close, but yes.
And once it's deemed complete, it's public, and.
There, there's a report written up and sent to the planning commission, right?
Okay.
Okay.
Anybody else? Future agenda items?
So I guess the reason I raise that under that topic is let's have an update, if we could please, on March seventeenth, on where we stand on all that, where is it exactly? I mean, yeah, the next meeting, wherever the hell we are in time, I mean, aloha land.
Yeah, as I say, aloha. He's coming back in ten months.
Thank you. Yeah.
Okay, if there's nothing else, there's no closed session, we're adjourned.
Amen.
There isn't.